Conferences are hard. The conference you've got to be down there at eight o'clock.
She went to go seventy, yeah. She like, I don't know what time she got up, but.
And then you don't get, then I go to bed, I just don't fall asleep.
Man.
Man. Wake it up and all of a sudden I have to get up again and then I'm telling you, third day of the conference. I'm not head bobbing.
Oh, yeah, I can imagine that.
Eating candy.
That's really interesting. Boy, I'm worse than that. If I mess up in that guy where he's like, oh, I get my own room, like, I'll just stay up until.
Yeah, I leave the TV on and watch sports or something.
I'm horrible. And then I'm like, oh, yeah. By like two o'clock each day, I'm like, where's my coffee? Because I need something.
Steph has a job where she's put eight hours in. Doesn't matter who she does. So I told her, like, one, you get it like six in the morning, you're done by two thirty. I used, I used to work five to one thirty, and we both worked for P S D at that time. And I would ask her, someday she would just get ready to go like on a break or a first line or a bunch when I was leaving for the day. But, yeah, she. I, unless she has a meeting, she can do whatever.
Okay. Ms. Jones?
I think so.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Cordova Recreation Park District Board of Directors meeting on this Wednesday, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, starting at six thirty P M. I will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome to the podium Ed Espinoza from Francisco and Associates. Following the pledge, CFO Matt Goodell will provide an introduction.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, peace, and justice for all.
So you probably recognize Ed back in the day, working alongside Joe Francisco, the original founding partner for Francisco and Associates, prior to Brian Brown, who was amazing for our district for years, but Brian's decided to move on. And now managing principal Ed Espinoza, along with senior project analyst Anthony Hernandez, are the new point of contact, so they're going to take over. Ed joined Francisco Associates back in two thousand thirteen. He's assisted many public agencies like ours throughout the state of California in creating and implementing innovative benefit assessment and tax methodologies like our landscape and lighting, our community facility districts, and helping us be sustainable. In his prior life, he was a project engineer working on public and private sector projects, and even before that, he's an alumni from the University of Florida. So, go Gators, anybody? Bulldogs, anybody? Georgia? No? Okay, all right. So, yeah, that's Ed Espinoza. Thank you. Let's move on to item two, standing action items, A B twenty-four forty-nine.
Thank you. Seeing no requests, we'll list it as no action taken.
Thank you, ma'am. Let's move on to item three, roll call.
Thank you. We received advance notification that Director Mattis would be late this evening.
Thank you.
Director Yearwood?
Here.
Secretary Langen?
Here.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Here.
Chair Danzel?
Here.
Thank you. Let's move on to item B, comments by the public on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Members of the public may address the board on topics within the district's jurisdiction that are not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. I do have two speaker cards, and I'd like to note for the record that we received written comments today from Mr. Spalding, which have been entered into the record, posted on our website, copies made available at the dais and for the public. So at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Spalding.
Thank you, ma'am.
Great. Okay, thank you for your stewardship of all the parks in the district, especially Larchmont Community Park. Being close to the park and having access to the American River are two reasons why I chose to buy a home in a neighborhood back in nineteen ninety-four. I liked it so much that I became the American River Parkway steward for Mile Eleven South in twenty seventeen. As some of you know, Larchmont Community Park may be a staging area for construction equipment for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' upcoming erosion control projects, three B and four. As a frequent user of the park and the American River Parkway, I and others, AmericanRiverTrees.org, have serious concerns about this project. We're doing everything we can to get the Corps to minimize the amount of vegetation and tree removal and reduce the amount of quarry rock and riprap that they plan to install. I will send you an email and ask you to include this project on an upcoming agenda and let us tell you more about it. I attended the June twenty-four meeting of the Oversight Committee of the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District because the Larchmont Community Park proposed staging area was on the agenda. No one from the Corps or SAFCA attended that meeting. The only information for the agenda item was a map included in the packet showing the north end of the park adjacent to the levee. Printed on the map are the words, quote, "No tree removal on park property," end quote. Through a Freedom of Information Act request, our group, AmericanRiverTrees.org, obtained a map of the project area from Wada Avenue to the Mayu Drain. We received the map on June twenty-eighth, so that was four days after that other meeting. The project area map is labeled Tree Removal Areas from the American River Erosion Control Contract Three B, Preliminary One Hundred Percent Designs Upstream, updated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. This map has a yellow polygon around all the trees at the north end of the park. That polygon is described as possible tree removal. The legend of the map states, "In addition, it is not anticipated that all trees within Larchmont Park and the Willhagen Drainage Basin would be removed, but the specific trees to be removed will not be known until construction." It then says, "Only minor tree removal, up to five trees at each staging area necessary for vehicles to access the staging areas, would be needed." This is not just about five trees being removed from the park. This section of the Parkway north of the levee is going to be decimated from your park to the Wada Avenue Bridge, just like the riverbank by Sac State and Campus Commons. Please watch this project carefully and scrutinize all the information that you're provided. Please protect Larchmont Community Park and the American River Parkway. And like I said, we'd be happy to come back and give you more information about all that we have learned about this project so far. And I'm a graduate and a civil engineer from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute in Troy, New York. Go engineers! Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spalding. We'll be turning this over to the general manager to get back in touch with you.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call to the podium Nancy Niskern.
Hi, I'm Nancy Niskern. I'm a neighbor of Pete's and a friend and live near the American River Tree, and I'm upset with the upcoming expected work by the Corps. I love our little park. I love the trees that are there with the shade. It's a lovely place to be. And lately, I noticed new immigrant population coming there at night after the sun sets to cool off. It's quite a wonderful area for all of us to enjoy. Thank you. Last time I introduced to the Oversight Committee my concerns with the pollution that comes with this major construction project. In two thousand twenty-two, EPA wrote the Corps, under one of their draft proposals, that air quality was an issue, specifically greenhouse gas emissions. And they also talked about particulate matter, very, very small particles of dust, oxides, organic compounds. Then they updated this in their comment letter to the draft S E I S, S E I R, in February twenty twenty-four. And they introduced themselves, EPA does, as the Clean Air Act, Section three oh nine requires the EPA to review and comment publicly on every environmental impact. And some of their conclusions I'd like to share with you now. One is, and this is for their whole construction area, but because the Larchmont Park's part, as I understand, it's going to be the staging area, it may be more intense in that area because you'll have more than one truck at any one time. Specific items are noise. Estimate noise levels from both landside and waterside work. This is what the Corps should do. Discuss compliance with city and county noise ordinances. Determine at what levels, wear, and temporary barriers for noise reduction would be needed. And this is based on what they've already done, the work they've done on the Sacramento River portion. Air quality, greenhouse gas emissions should provide a discussion of potential air quality impacts of the proposed project. In estimating criteria, pollutant emissions for the analysis area. Discuss the timeframe for release of these emissions through the licensed lifespan of the project. And we understand that the estimate right now is two years.
Nancy, you have thirty seconds.
I'm sorry, I got what?
You have thirty seconds left.
Thank you. Fugitive dust source controls, they need to stabilize phase grading operations where appropriate and use water trucks, that sort of thing, to keep the particulate matter at a reduced area. They want the Corps to reduce unnecessary idling from heavy equipment, and lease or buy newer, cleaner equipment using the best available emissions control.
Nancy, your time is up.
Thank you very much, and this is what they directed to the Corps.
And if you'd like to give a copy of that to the general manager, he can get back with you on that?
I would like to type it neatly and send it in if I might.
That is perfectly okay.
I can hardly read this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments, Ms. Jones?
No further requests.
Thank you. Let's move on to item three, consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of the consent calendar. And this evening, we have eleven items for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have any items that would like to be pulled by the public at this time?
Seeing no requests.
Hearing none. Do we have any by the board? Do we have any by the staff? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion to? Yes.
Chair Danzel, I'll make the motion because approved consent calendar items, C one through C eleven.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion by Director Yearwood, or a second? I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Mattis is absent.
Thank you. Motion passes. Let's move on to item D, one of the best parts of the night, presentations.
Thank you. Item D one is a presentation by Partnership for Quality Living of a plot commemorating the contributions of Paul Hagan. And I'd like to welcome to the podium Mr. Wayne Lowery.
Thank you so much. I've got a little bit of a summer cold, so if you can't hear me, I'll speak into the mic more. My name is Wayne Lowery. I chair the Partnership for Quality Living, which was started by the California Recreation Society, District Two. Your president-elect for District Two is in the audience. Nina happens to be on your staff. I also want to point out that my daughter works for you. She's rec supervisor doing the aquatics program. You probably already knew that judging from the smiles I see. So, good luck with that. So. I'm a third-generation Rancho Cordovan. My grandmother was born here in the eighteen eighties. My grandparents farmed, which used to be next to Cordova Lodge, off in Vindale and Highway fifty, now just Folsom Boulevard since they moved the fifty over a little bit. And I didn't learn to swim at Cordova Pool because it hadn't been built yet when I was a kid, so I had to go to Carmichael. Thank you for building the pool after I learned how to swim, because I did use it a lot. In the audience, I want to point out that Julie Hagan Belka is here, and Neil Orchard and Rosalie, his wife. And Patrick was pointing out that he's only the third administrator you've had working for you. That's amazing. That's very unusual. Paul was here thirty-five years, starting in nineteen sixty, and that's impressive. I've made written notes, so I'm going to read for him so that I don't mess up because my head's in this fog from all the medication they got me on right now. The Hall of Honor Awards Program was originally created by the California Recreation and Parks Society, District Two, which is a regional area of park and recreation professionals in the seventeen-county area from Sacramento North to Oregon and east to Nevada. Now an independent nonprofit organization, P Q L manages the Hall of Honor for the purpose of recognizing, documenting, and promoting historical contributions to parks, recreation, wellness, and leisure programs and facilities. The Hall of Honor provides the opportunity to chronicle events of historical significance that have helped shape California's local park system, leisure programs, and facilities. It's an opportunity to recognize outstanding contributions of professionals in the field of recreation, parks, wellness, and leisure, as we're doing tonight, and recognize significant program areas and facilities sponsoring organizations, collaborative partnerships, foundations, and/or individuals, and interpreting the significance of recreation parks, leisure services, and improving the public's health and wellness. If you go online with P Q L dot com, you'll see all the awards we've given and we're very selective on making sure that an individual or a facility or a park meets very high qualifications and has long-term impact. So you can do a great thing, but if it doesn't last forever and make quality of life better, you won't get recognized by our group. American River Parkway is on Bidwell Park, the Pacific Crest Trail, things like that are all part of that. Why the Hall of Honor? First, it's to identify the quality of life factors as issues of local and regional concern. Second, to improve citizen engagement. Third, to build leadership, connections, collaborations, and partnerships. And finally, what we consider most important, is to record and celebrate our history. The purpose of that is so that future generations can look at things that were successful and have a basis, a model, to kind of go forward with their own projects and programs. Now, the question, why Paul Hagan? We don't recognize many individuals. It's pretty rare. But in two thousand ten, the Hall of Honor recognized Paul Hagan as an innovator and leader in the field of parks and recreation. Paul was originally the superintendent of Recreation and Parks for the City of Willows in California, if you don't know where Willows is, and later became the first administrator for Cordova Recreation Park District. That was nineteen sixty. At Cordova, he directed an aggressive acquisition and capital improvement program for the development of twenty-one recreation and park facilities in Rancho Cordova. There were no parks when I was a kid. The nearest school was on Mather. I did kindergarten there, went to Folsom for first grade. Second grade, they finally built Rancho Cordova School, so I did second and third grade there, then back to Folsom for fourth grade. I was on the bus a lot. The bus didn't stop when I got to junior high school. I went to Mills. And the first day, I rode my bike down there like I used to do at Cordova Lane when I was a kid, and found out that that's not cool. When you're at that age, you don't ride your bike. So for the next four, three, seven years, I walked. It's only two miles from my house on Coloma Road, right? One of your parks is named after my cousin. I don't know if it's the park or the ball field, Bill Lowery, over by Cordova Lane. We had a lot of family in this area. Paul also developed the adoption of the Joint Use Agreement with the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District that served as a nationwide model. And that one point is probably the trigger that got Paul on our list of Hall of Honor. Because every park district I know, every city I know, always looks to, how can we build a park so it's going to be an advantage for the school district so that we can also take advantage of the school district's property for you doing recreation programs? And it's a wonderful concept. It's also instrumental in bringing the National AAU Synchronized Swimming Championship to Rancho Cordova area in nineteen sixty-six. Paul was an active member of both the National Recreation Parks Association and California Parks and Recreation Society for over twenty years. He was recognized by the C P R S State Fellowship Award in nineteen seventy-four and the C P R S District Two Professional Citation in nineteen sixty-six and nineteen seventy-three. He was a Paul Harris Fellow recipient, which is Rotary International's highest award. You see, I've buried my Rotary pin somewhere around here today. And he was honored in his own community when Cordova Community Park was renamed Hagan Community Park on November fourteenth, nineteen eighty-four, by the Board of Directors. So you guys also recognize Paul, value it. And Paul, I didn't know Paul real well. I did know one of his daughters, Paula. But Neil Orchard, who's here today, was one of about four people in the Sacramento area park professionals that I consider one of my mentors. I'm very proud that he's still hanging in there and feels the value and importance of what he accomplished when he was with Cordova Park District. And if you don't mind, I'd like to invite Julie up to receive a plaque for her family. And I just realized Bob Overstreet, former director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Sacramento, snuck in the back. He is also on our committee.
Just thank you. This is such a huge honor for our family and for the community, and it's Neil just reminded me, thirty-eight years since my grandfather passed away, and he's still winning awards, which just makes my heart so happy. And if you knew him, if you were fortunate enough to know him, he would win your heart over as well. So, this is wonderful. He was an innovator. He was an incredible leader in our community, and I am so proud. I'm still so proud. So, thank you all. Thank you so much. This was wonderful.
Can we do a photo maybe with?
So you guys aren't empty-handed. I brought a second one, because I knew somebody was going to steal one.
Don't blind report.
You want Jill up here? Julie, I mean, oh, you're up here. Sorry about that.
Oh, definitely.
Got a wide angle lens here?
Neil Orchard, come on in here. Hold on, hold on. The star of the show, Neil.
You guys want to push back just a little bit towards the dais?
Sure.
Perfect. Okay, ready?
Push camera really nice.
Right here. One, two, three. All right, took about ten, so you're good.
Congratulations, everyone. Joe was a Mustang. I'm a Mustang.
We have to get on the naming of the field.
Yes.
In the off-season.
After an election.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Okay, let's move on with our meeting. Thank you for a great presentation. Let's move on to item E, committee reports. I see none at this time, Ms. Jones?
None at this time.
Great. Let's move on to item F, public hearings.
Thank you. This is the portion of the meeting where we begin our public hearings. Item F one is to adopt Resolution twenty-four slash twenty-five dash seven, approving engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District.
I'd like to open this public hearing at six fifty-three P M.
Thank you. I'd like to turn it over to CFO Goodell or Mr. Espinoza.
He came a long ways.
Thank you. Good evening, Cordova Recreation and Park District Board. The last time I attended a board meeting, it was at the old City Hall. And so, first of all, I want to congratulate you on the new building. It's amazing. It's wonderful. So, congratulations, and it's great to be here again. The Independence at Mather Landscape and Lighting Assessment District was formed in two thousand. This district provides funding for the ongoing maintenance of Veterans Park and Independence Park within the Independence at Mather subdivision through annual assessments placed on the property tax roll. The assessments may be increased annually by the greater of the change in the San Francisco Bay Area Consumer Price Index, or C P I, which was three point six seven percent for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, or three percent. The district assessments are proposed to be increased by the maximum three point six seven percent for this upcoming fiscal year, which results in the assessments for single-family homes going from two hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents to two hundred and eight dollars and sixteen cents for all one thousand two hundred and seventy-one homes in the subdivision. The total projected revenue for the year is two hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and seventy-one. The district conducts a three-step process to approve the assessments every year. The first action occurred back on April seventeenth, when the board directed staff to initiate the process by preparing the annual engineer's report. The second action occurred on June nineteenth, when the engineer's report was preliminarily approved by the board, and a public hearing was set for this evening, July seventeenth. Tonight is the third and final action. The board is being asked to hold a public hearing, take public testimony, and approve the final engineer's report, which authorizes the levy of the assessments for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. With that, that's the end of my presentation, but district staff and myself are happy to address any questions the board or members of the public may have.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any public comment?
No requests.
Hearing none. I'd like to close this public hearing at six fifty-five P M. Director Yearwood, any questions, comments, concerns?
That's a negative.
Thank you. Secretary Langen?
No.
Vice Chair Sloan?
And I have none. Do I hear a motion?
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution twenty-four dash twenty-five dash seven, approving engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessments, and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five for the Independence of Mather Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District.
I have a motion by Secretary Langen, or a motion by Secretary Langen. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye. Motion passes.
Director Mattis is absent.
Thank you. Let's move on to item F two.
Thank you. Item F two is to adopt Resolution twenty-four slash twenty-five dash eight, approving the engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five for the Cordova Recreation and Park District, Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
I'd like to open this public hearing at six fifty-six P M.
Good evening, Board. The Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement Assessment District, otherwise known as P M R I D, was formed back in two thousand six. This district provides funding for the ongoing maintenance of landscaping, park, and recreational improvements benefiting properties within the district through the levy of annual assessments placed on the property tax roll. The maximum assessment rate for the district is subject to an annual adjustment that's tied to the change in the Consumer Price Index for the San Francisco Bay Area from December to December, with the annual adjustment not to exceed three percent. Any change in the prior year's C P I in excess of three percent can be cumulatively reserved as the quote-unquote unused C P I and shall be used to increase the maximum authorized assessment rate in future years in which the C P I is less than three percent, which is the case this year. The annual change from December twenty-two, twenty twenty-two to December twenty twenty-three was two point six two percent, and therefore, we are going to be using some of that unused or that reserved C P I to increase, we're proposing to increase the assessments to the full maximum three percent. And so, going forward, the unused balance will be three point three six percent that can be utilized in future years. The assessment rate for a single-family home will be increased from thirty-one dollars and eleven cents to thirty-two dollars and four cents for upcoming. for upcoming fiscal year 2425. The projected revenue, the total projected revenue for the entire district is $1,210,977. That will be levied on approximately 28,500 parcels throughout the district. Similar to the Mather District, there's a three-step annual process to approve the assessments each year. The first action also occurred back on April 17th, when the board directed staff to initiate the process by preparing the annual engineer's report. The second action occurred on June 19th, when the engineer's report was preliminarily approved and the public hearing was set for this evening, July 17th. Tonight is the third and final action. The board is being asked to hold a public hearing, take public testimony, approve the final engineer's report, and authorize the levy of assessments for upcoming fiscal year 2425. And that concludes my presentation. Be happy to address any questions the board or members of the public may have. Thank you.
Ms. Jones, any speakers?
I have no requests.
Thank you. We'll be closing this at, public hearing at 6:59 PM. This time, Director Yearwood, any questions, comments, concerns?
I have none. Thank you.
Secretary Langen?
I do have one, and it's more just a general question.
Sure.
From my personal understanding. So, you said if the excess, is it capped at 3% no matter what?
Yes, so from one year to the next, it's capped at 3%. And so, the unused balance can be applied in any future year where the CPI is less than the 3%, which is the case this year. So, the change in the CPI was 2.62.
Yeah.
And so, we're using that reserve that's currently in place to bring it up to the full 3. But to answer your question, the annual assessment from one year to the next can only go up by a cap of 3%.
Thank you.
No problem.
Vice Chair Sloan? No questions here. At this time, do I hear a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution 24/25-8 approving engineer's report confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year 2024-25 for the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Sloan. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Mattis is absent.
Thank you, folks. Motion passes. Let's move on to item G, regular calendar.
Thank you. Item G1 is to adopt resolution 24/25-9 amending the full-time salary schedule as required by California Code of Regulations, Section 570.5. And I'd like to welcome HR manager Andrea White.
Thank you, Chair Danzel, Board of Directors. This evening, I'm presenting a staff report, a resolution, and a proposed amended salary schedule for two considerations. The first is a cost-of-living adjustment, COLA. As most of you know, the cost-of-living adjustment is based on what the economy is doing, what the inflation is for the year. And so, this isn't a merit increase. This is to offset interest rates or the, you know, inflation that happens here in our region. And we consider this every year, looking at the history of it. In the last couple of years, we've provided a 3% COLA. This year, we benchmark the agencies that we use during our salary study, and the average was 2.6%. So, you saw in the preliminary budget, it was discussed in the preliminary budget workshop, that we were still trying to pull information. We can't always get all of the information from all agencies, but we did get nine responses, and that was the average. We believe that we want to kind of keep up with the COLA as with other agencies, so that we still meet the philosophy, the pay philosophy, of being in the middle or the median of the market, and so that we're continue to be competitive with other agencies for recruitment and retention. So, that is why we're requesting a 2.6%. We always, just as a side note, we always kind of go through an exercise. You know, number one, can we afford it? Number two, you know, what are the benchmarks? And of course, number three, what are the inflation rates? I think it was noted for social security this year, it was like 3.2%, but we really would just want to keep within the market here in our local area with the other agencies. So, the second item that I'm bringing to the board is adding a position that we are looking to maybe change our recruitment. We're looking to add the position called Park Project Manager. And for your reference, that is a position we're looking to replace Christina James, who left our agency. We recruited for a landscape architect position. That's what her, that's what her title was. And it's not going as well as we'd like it to. We've only received six applications, and really only one individual was qualified. We believe that we can still serve that department by implementing this position and not requiring the landscape architect license. And we're hoping to get more responses and more applicants by doing so. This position has paid 7% less than a landscape architect. If we happen to get an applicant who applies for this and they're a landscape architect, we would offer them the landscape architect position. So, we're hoping to implement that so we could get, you know, continue to try to find a great candidate for our agency. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, do we have any public comment on this?
We have no requests.
Director Yearwood?
So, by doing the project manager as opposed to the landscape architect, who, of those roles that she did, who takes those on? Is there somebody that has to have some kind of certificate or something to be able to do that, or is current staff able to do it?
Right. That's a great point. I think that we would have to supplement this position with some use of consultants. Laura, can chime in if she wants to?
Correct.
Oh, great.
You're not going to do it, Laura?
Secretary Langen?
My question's more with the COLA. I know it was in the, our last meeting's budget, and at 2%. So, is it, I guess for me, the way I personally understand that is that it's not in there as 2.6. And so, my question then would be, where's the money going to come from?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, that, to my understanding, is kind of a placeholder while we were waiting for all of the information to come in from our local agencies. So, if we do, if you do adopt this, it will be part of the final budget. And I think Matt can speak directly to where exactly those funds come from.
Yeah, so we actually have, there's going to be some adjustments on both sides. We have some credits coming for our insurance. We have some credits coming for our workers' comp that came in lower than what we anticipated, about $72,000. And so, this 0.6% is about $50,000, $55,000 more than the 2%. So, it can, it can be balanced by that savings. So, that's, that's my initial attack at it. But I'll have the final list of debits and credits when I bring the final budget.
Okay. Yeah, because my, my only thing is it's, I'm all for, you know, the COLA. It's just it's hard to see the amount of money and go, oh, man, there's other park stuff we could do. And, you know, that's just, is my personal tension with it. So, but thank you.
Sure.
Vice Chair Sloan?
The position for replacing Christina. So, the project management person, would that person be also furthering their education to get certified in the future?
Yeah, it would not be a requirement, because we hired them without the requirement of a landscape architect license. But a lot of what Christina did was day-to-day project management. All day, every day? All day, every day. So, that was the core of her, of that position, and that's what we expect for this position. And so, again, I mean, we would love, and ideally, we would be filling that landscape architect, you know, position, but we're just not receiving enough applicants. We've benchmarked that position, and it's not far out of the range of other agencies. But there's a lot of competition. There's been a lot of positions open for that. And, you know, we're just competing with all the cities and counties nearby. And, you know, we can, and we did a very aggressive advertisement. We actually did some headhunting. We sent the position to every licensed landscape architect in the region. So, we tried very hard to fill that position. And so, we definitely need somebody to pick up those tasks and responsibilities that have been left to Laura's team.
So, the project manager would have an emphasis on Parks and Rec in their, in their portfolio kind of thing? They would have?
Ideally, absolutely.
If you're looking for.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's tough to, you know, to lose good people like Christina. And now, we're finding out that the value, I know she's going on bigger and better things, but I've also liked to, is our salary in competition compatible with the other?
It is. It is actually compatible. I mean, there are some agencies that pay a lot. City of Sacramento, Consumna CSD, they have very high wages. We're in the median of the market, so we're in the middle. But there've been quite a few recruitments in the last, I'd say, six months. City of Roseville, a private sector, County of Sacramento, there's a lot of growth. There's a lot of growth in the whole region. So, we, you know, opened it immediately, but we didn't anticipate going through this until, you know, soon before she left.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, like you said, Ms. White, a lot of went up for this landscape architect over the last six months or so. And I'm hearing that it is a, nobody's finding anybody right now. I mean, it's, this is a tough test. I mean, and a tough thing to get through in the state of California to be a landscape architect. I know there's, I know there's people that have the qualifications outside of the state of California and are having a hard time getting it. So, it's not an easy thing to get. So, I know that you, as the head of HR, are definitely looking at every option and how to get this. And thank you for looking at ways to help continue to keep us moving and growing and, until we can find that person. If we have to consult for a short time, then that's what we're going to have to do to get that, that stamp or that signature, I guess. So, thank you for working so hard on that. That is all my comments. At this time, do you hear a motion?
Chair Danzel, I make the motion. I move the Board of Directors adopt resolution 24/25-9 amending the full-time salary schedule as required by California Code of Regulations, Section 570.5.
I have a motion by Director Yearwood. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, Secretary Langen. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Secretary Langen?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Director Mattis is absent.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item H, Board of Directors' items.
Thank you. Item H1, we have no items. Item H2, no training in the last period. So, item H2B is the Community Activities Report.
Thank you. We'll start at the far end of the diocese. Director Yearwood?
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Let's see here. First thing, I attended the Cordett's Aqua Show on Sunday, June 30th, in the nice, early, cooler morning hour. Wonderful. It's a nice program. I never, I never think I ever asked. I mean, it looks like they've gotten bigger. Are there more of them? Yeah, right? Yeah. So, it's a wonderful program. Always enjoy coming out to that. And then, let's see, on July 4th, I beat the pavement out there on Coloma Road with many of you others, and walked that parade. And that very tempered weather, yeah. So, that did me for the rest of the day. I was done. So, but always a nice event, because you get to see all these people that are yelling at you, and it's old friends and things of that, of that sort, and kids that you coached in soccer or knew from soccer, different things like that. So, I did also attend, I didn't put it on here, but I did attend the fireworks show on the 3rd. That was a nice, always a nice event. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Let's move down to the diocese. Secretary Langen?
Yeah, so, July 4th, the parade, Ranch Cordova 4th of July Parade, great time, walking, just having a good time out there, passing out candy, some of the flags, and just, just really enjoyed being out there, even though it was, it was a little warm. You know, we'll get, we'll get by. Toasty. That's good work. Toasty. So, yeah, so just, just a great time to be out there and just see people and so on and so forth. And then, I put on there the Rosemont Community Association meeting. Unfortunately, I was pretty sick that day, and so I did not attend it.
Thank you.
Could have been.
Vice Chair Sloan? Rick, your report?
My turn?
Yes.
I, I forgot to add something, and I'm going to remove one, so I'm going to have as many as I had. On June 29th, I went, it was Saturday, I went to the Lincoln Park, Lincoln Village Park, and they had a small business expo that was put on by the, it takes the Lincoln Village. And I just want to say there was a very nice, nicely done little business expo for small businesses. They had a lot of breakout sessions, talking with some, Diane Rogers was there from the chamber, and the Hispanic Chamber was represented, the Asian Chamber was represented, giving people insights on how to help them business-wise. So, I just wanted to thank the district for allowing them to use the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center as their, as their base of operation, and the park was really nice. On June 30th, I attended the Cordett Aqua Show, along with some fellow directors. It was hot, but it was very, very nice. Pool looked beautiful. It was well-attended. The show was fun. I took a lot of photographs, posted them, and got a lot of nice comments. It was a nice, a nice event for the district. The July 3rd and 4th at Hagan, and festivities and celebrations, and the parade was on par, as it always is. I didn't see, besides the weather, it was still nice, you know. It just, they had a little circus out there at Hagan, which was kind of interesting, because I wouldn't want to be doing that in that heat. It was, that was tough. So, and then on July 10th, we had a little special board meeting for the CARPD, finalizing our conference date and location. And I just want to give you a heads up on that. It's May 20th through the 24th, 2025. It'll be at Paradise Point Resort in San Diego, and in Mission Bay, the Mission Bay area. So, I think, and I, and then the next thing is I, I unfortunately missed going to the Party in the Park. It got under my radar, and there's so much happening, I just totally, you know, zoned out. And I'm sorry I missed that. I really wanted to be there. Looked like you had a lot of fun. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, I don't know if you got Director Mattis at 7:15?
Yes, thank you.
Director Mattis, I'm going to jump back to you for your board report on Party in the Park. Just want to speak on that for...
Oh, yeah, Party in the Park. Sorry for my absence, my tardiness. Party in the Park was, was fun. It was great. It was nice to see visually where the proposed dog park's going to go. And it seemed like the community was very happy about that. And I think we got a lot of good feedback from there. The vendors were great, and I liked the little scavenger hunt that the park had for, to go to hit up each vendor. So, my kids enjoyed that.
Did they get enough bags?
They were not allowed to get bags. If they couldn't carry it, they couldn't come home.
Right, right.
So, but other than that, it was great. So, I'm just really looking forward to the dog park going in there and just getting some more feedback, and then finalizing that, that plan. It's going to be good.
Great. Thank you. My report's going to be short, sweet. Aqua Show, I did attend on June 30th for a short amount of time. I was actually working in Hagan Park, setting up for the Ranch Cordova 4th of July at that time. So, I spent a short amount of time at the Aqua Show, but as always...
So I spent a short amount of time at the Aqua Show, but it was always fun to see how that organization keeps growing and expanding and making themselves better every year. July fourth, the parade, yes, it was warm, it was hot, I was tired, but it was, it was fun. The float, once again, it was a great float. Year two, I believe, this, this time, and, you know, we keep stepping our game up, and so we're doing a great job. And thank you to the staff that participated then, and the staff that drove and things like that, and handing out candy and general manager being there with us. July tenth, CARPD Conference Committee, as, as Vice Chair Sloan said, yes, we're going to San Diego this next year. As far as I can find, in, in the organization, we've never been to Southern California, and so that's going to be a major change for that organization, actually, to finally, for the first time, go south of Santa Cruz, Monterey area. That's the furthest they've ever been. Well, I guess Yosemite, but that's, that's it. They've never gone any further south than the, the middle of the state, that, that anybody has been able to tell me. So major change, be a great weekend. Lots of fun things coming, no theme picked yet, but we're working on that with the comments committee. And then I did attend Party in the Park at White Rock. Yeah, it was great to see that, that park being utilized and it's, you know, it was great, staff was able to open up that park for free, free splash park that day, things like that, give back to the community. It's great to see some old tile artwork that was put in the day that the park was, you know, originally opened. My family's, my family has things there, some of my Boy Scouts who actually helped plant trees in that park all those years ago, their, their tiles were up there. So it was, it was great to see things like that. Scavenger hunt was fun, you know, staff did a great job, and everybody was, everybody seemed really happy that day. So that is the end of my report. So let's move on to item I, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Item I one is the district-wide monthly progress report for July, and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. All right. So a couple of highlights from the month. We attended the Strategies for Prevention of Workplace Violence Training, SB five five three, compliance. I want to thank HR Manager Andrea White for working with the staff in making sure we're all compliant with that new law that went into effect July first. We had the Shaw Law Group who helped us get into compliance, and now we have a prevention of workplace violence plan that is required, as well as a training that we're providing for all of our staff. So that will be something where we're gonna try to get everyone in compliance by July thirty-first, so very excited about that. We had a all-staff recognition annual barbecue that we hosted over at Hagan, and we retired the Pickle Program, but we will have a new program coming up this fall, and I will introduce that customer service program to the board and the staff coming up this fall. It'll be a surprise, but maybe not that much of a surprise, because I've already let the cat out of the bag, so. But wait, it will be amazing. I do want to thank Nicole Lowery, who's in the audience today, and Will, for putting together an amazing float for the Fourth of July. It was awesome. We were running around, literally running around, handing out candy and bubbles. That was the fastest parade I have ever participated in. I was literally running after the float. So it was no lie, it was the fastest parade I have ever participated in, but it was amazing. So Nicole, well done. It was fantastic. The, we had a new developer come to town, and we met with them. The interesting development that will be going in has a lake, and so Blodgett Lake is a new amenity that the Wagel property had come to us, asking about the potential for us to be using a property that they're looking to develop. It's the last unplanned area of the city of Ranch Cordova's development area. So we met with them, and this is a very interesting piece of property that does have that lake on it. They, after this meeting, went to the city council and talked about this, you know, lake, and we both agree that this should be a lake that has public access, and so we're excited to be working with them going into the future, as to see how we can make this lake a public amenity going forward. So very excited about that. We did have the Party in the Park, and we did get some community feedback on the dog park proposal. We started off with a proposed site, and then after some of that community feedback, we might be making some changes. So we did participate in making sure we heard very clearly some of those interest and concerns, and so we're excited to see after those comments if there's changes in amenities that they would prefer, and then go back and get some conceptual designs made for your board's consideration. We have, obviously, some election information, so we opened up elections for candidates to apply for open seats. We have the July fifteenth date started Monday, and it closes on August ninth. We have a community outreach meeting coming up for the future Montalena Community Park, which will be coming up this coming Tuesday, July twenty-third, at six thirty PM at Sunrise Elementary School, and we will make sure to get the invitation out to the board this week, so that you can put that in your calendars, and we would encourage you to participate if you're interested in finding out what feedback the community in that area would like to see in that community park. Our budget did fantastic in closing out the fiscal year. Kudos to the staff in monitoring your budgets. Well done. Operation spending finished under budget by nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars or six percent of the overall budget, which is phenomenal. Out of our forty-eight projects planned, forty-three of them are complete, three are still activated, and two will be encumbered into next fiscal year. The recreation revenue finished above target by five percent, and overall revenue and resources by three percent. So that's some pretty terrific budgeting. So kudos to you all. Fantastic. Well done. Our fiscal year has begun for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty, yeah, twenty twenty-five, I can't even believe I'm saying that, fiscal year. So we're looking forward to August and bringing forward the final budget for your consideration. So that is something to be looking forward to, and also, crazy enough, we have started the audit for twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. This is the earliest we've ever done the audit, ever, maybe? Yeah, so it was kind of crazy for us to have our auditors here so soon, but there's a plan for that. And so we're looking to do it so early so that we can possibly look to get a nice polish on it, so we can go after some fiscal awards, and so we're working hard to prepare for that. Some more to come on that. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jill, who is going to give us our Parks and Recreation report.
Well, thank you for that. Once again, thank you to everyone who participated in the Fourth of July Parade. As already mentioned, a little hot, but we got through it. I do want to give additional thanks to Nicole Lowery, who actually was the person who pulled this all together, but there's other staff that were key in getting it afloat, I guess. We had our, our park maintenance worker supervisor too, Mark Hague, who helped out, as well as Kelly Rungy and some other staff, and then Will Hart also drove the truck that day, so the vehicle that day. So we appreciate everyone helping out, and I'm sure there's a ton of other people, but those are the three people that really put a lot of work into it. So I appreciate those, those staff members taking their holiday to spend it with us and be a part of that parade. So again, thanks to all of the staff. We look forward to joining the fun again next year in 2025. We have some, some ideas for, for the float for next year, so thanks, thank you again. Obviously, it's the middle of summer, Parks and Recreation's very busy, doing just about everything and everything to keep our residents happy, keep them cool, keep them out of the sun. So as you can see in your report, there's lots of programs that are still going on throughout the summer. We're working on our recreation guide right now for the fall and winter programs, so we should be seeing that here probably in just a little bit over a month. I do want to highlight our teen adventure group, our tag group, that is a funded, which is a grant-funded program. It's still going strong. They just took a camping trip, a three-day camping trip. Very excited that we have this program up and running that are giving these kids the opportunities to do something different and get them out of town and into nature. And so we do have a new program coordinator, Chris Jeannie, who's out there, just making sure that these kids get a really unique experience, and I, I just want to thank that group for, for putting that together and giving these kids that opportunity. And then you can see, again, lots going on with athletics, senior center. You can see that we have the garden that's already growing. It's just amazing how fast that garden has grown. So we're really excited that Heather and her staff are able to provide these kinds of vegetables and food for our green thumb lunches that happen on Wednesdays and Fridays. So good to see that our new planters are working out in, in our favor. And with that, I'm going to go to the calendar for the month, the next couple of months. We have, like Patrick had mentioned, the Montalena Development First Community Outreach Meeting, which is gonna be at the Sunrise Elementary School on Tuesday, July twenty-third, from six thirty to eight. Starts at six thirty, so be there around six thirty. We have National Senior Citizens Day on Wednesday, August twenty-first. We have our first dive-in movie. Should be exciting. At the Cordova Community Pool on Friday, September sixth, and that's gonna be at seven o'clock, so if you're interested in seeing a movie. Nicole, do we know what movie it's going to be yet? Not yet.
Jaws. Jaws.
To be determined. It's really gonna, it really is gonna come down to how much does that movie cost us, but we're gonna get there. So we have Meet the Machines at Hagan Community Park on Saturday, September fourteenth, from ten to noon. We have the Ranch Cordova Sports Hall of Fame Induction Ceremony, hosted by the CCC, on Saturday, September fourteenth. We have National Cheeseburger Day on Wednesday, September eighteenth, and then we have our first-ever Barktoberfest, which is going to be at Lincoln Village Community Park on Saturday, September twenty-first, from eleven to two PM. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Just so everybody in the room knows, and it's public, they did post who the Hall of Fame is, and Paul Hagan is also going into the Hall of Fame this year, so.
It's a year of Paul Hagan.
Yeah, so, and then Julie's husband, Ronnie Belka, his father is also going into the Hall of Fame, so big, big year. Okay, let's move on to item J, informational items.
Thank you. Item J one is Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We have three articles, two public hearing notices, the notice of election, which we are required to post, two newsletters, and then J two is your calendar.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, let's move on to item K, closed session.
Thank you. We have one item in closed session this evening. Item K one is a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to California Government Code, Section five four nine five six point nine D four, based on existing facts to consider whether to initiate litigation. Number of potential cases, one.
Thank you. Let's move into closed session at seven thirty-two PM. Thank you. Let's move into closed session at 7:32 p.m.
I'd like to reconvene this regular board meeting of the recreation park district board of directors coming out of closed session at 8:16. The board met in closed session with legal counsel about potential litigation regarding the defective Larchmont Tennis Court resurfacing project. The board voted unanimously to authorize general manager to enter into contract for the qualified takeover contractor to immediately proceed with the necessary work to mitigate the damages caused by the original contractor, defective construction and to negate legal counsel to seek payments for damages from the original contractor and its insurance carrier. And at this time, we move to the last item of the board meeting, which is item M. We will be adjourning to the next regular board meeting of board members of the recreation park district on Wednesday, August 21st, 2024 at 6:30 p.m. Thank you, folks.